Now, I will call the Thursday, March 27th meeting of the Dune City Planning and Commission Meeting to order at 6:00 p.m. Shall I do roll call?
It's okay.
Okay. Could we have a roll call please?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'll do roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Gordon.
Present.
Commissioner Nichols.
Present.
Commissioner Remden.
Present.
Commissioner Overholzer. We're all here, there is still one vacancy on the commission. Would everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a country for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a country and justice for all. The next item for consideration is the agenda. And do we have any changes?
You have a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is that deal?
Deal.
Okay.
All in paper are by motion passes, thank you. The next item of business is the consent agenda, which gives the minutes from the February 27th planning commission made. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Move the agenda.
A second.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes has been made and seconded, all in paper.
Aye.
The next item is announcements of correspondence. You'll see that in your packets are the council meeting minutes from February 19th and from And I'd like to add a couple of other announcements just as reminders, I think we've discussed them in the past. First one is on June 25th, which is a Wednesday, at 10:00 a.m., Dune City is hosting Oregon Government Ethics Committee Ethics Training Class. For those of you who are working, obviously you probably can't come to that, but we may have some materials available for training if you're interested in that later. This class may also be online, and I think at one time our insurance company required us to take it, so I will look into that and if necessary, let you know how to get it taken online.
What was that date?
Wednesday, June 25th. It's at 10:00 a.m. Several cities are going to be here, so Dune City's hosting. And Dune City's event for the public next month is going to be April 24th at 1:00. It's an estate planning discussion hosted by Dune City and a couple of attorneys from town will be here talking about estate planning, in case you're interested in coming to that.
That's Thursday?
It's a Saturday.
How did the shredder go?
Um...
The 26th.
Sorry, Jamie?
Sorry, I just said the 26th, okay.
24th.
Of April?
Uh-huh. Shredder went okay. I myself had an entirely full banker's box.
I totally forgot about it.
Oh, that's too bad. I don't think there was a huge turnout. We wished a little more.
Yeah. Participation. We were ready for it.
Dripping truck, shredder built in inside, had a camera inside the truck so you could stand outside and watch the tifo and give a video. I appreciate it, and so thank you, Dune City and the sponsors. Linda, any announcements?
I don't have any. Lada didn't give me any.
Next item of business is to schedule the next planning commission, which would be...
Thursday, the 24th? April?
Oh, yeah.
It's a Thursday, not a Saturday. You were saying it was on a Saturday?
No, I think it's, you're right. Is the estate planning on a Thursday?
Right.
Yep. No, that's the place right there, 1/5. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'm...
Yeah, 24th though.
1/5.
So when is on the Thursday?
You guys, you must have our planning commission that night at 6:00.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so the planning commission meeting is also on the 24th. Sean, you mentioned that you might have extracurricular activities coming up. Do we need to change that date? Because we can't. To a Thursday?
Thursday is going to be hard, so...
Do you want to change the meeting next month to another day?
We do Wednesday.
Does Wednesday sound for...
Wednesday at 6:00.
Uh-huh, Wednesday the 23rd. Janine?
I'd be cutting it close, but I could.
But is there a better day? Not week?
It just all depends on the day.
This trap's going to be Monday and Thursday for me.
Okay.
I'm doing a class on Tuesday nights, but it like rotates every other Tuesday night.
Is it Tuesday, the 22nd?
That I'd have to check. Getting to that, I have to go through a server. It's on my school calendars.
The 23rd, okay for you, Jamie?
I may be late. It'd be cutting it close, but yes, other than that, it would just be... So we can do that.
Okay. Okay, so next month's meeting then will be Wednesday, the 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. Moving on to unfinished old business. You have in your packets a memo that I crafted for you all back in February. It's whittled down now so that it's just discussing accessory dwelling units, and we can use that as a reference to go through potential changes to our code. The first part of the memo goes through the various pages, which it seems like ADUs are referenced in our redline version of the code, and then subsequent pages include notes from DLCD's guidance on implementing ADU requirements, also language from model code, and an example of Florence's code on accessory buildings. Just time in at any point along here. So on page 7 of 268, which is our redlined version, is where the definition for accessory dwelling unit lives, and as amended, it reads, "An interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in connection with or that is accessory to a single-family dwelling." That particular definition appears to be also the one that's in model code. The model code being from DLCD and Transportation Growth Management. For some reason, they write the model code, I don't know why. I don't see a definition from Florence, but to start with, are we okay with that particular definition?
I like that it matches, that it's the same in the other...
In the model code.
In the model code.
Well, before we get started down this little path, did we agree in the past that we wanted to talk about adding accessory dwelling units as permissive structures in the city?
Yeah.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay.
You're for that.
Okay, then. I believe that we decided in a past meeting to go ahead and delete the definition for guest house, which is on page 15 of 268, and to eliminate references to guest houses in light of the fact we're using accessory dwelling units.
Yeah. I agree with you. There are restrictions on guest houses that aren't...
Correct. Okay. Pardon me while I take a sip. The next question regarding ADUs is over on page 45 of our existing code. And that's the table of contents for section 155.2, which is land use zone administration. The question is, shall we change the title of section 21220 from bed and breakfast to accessory dwelling units in light of the fact we have also deleted bed and breakfast?
That's the note I have there. And that guest houses became multi-family?
That is correct. And then similarly, over on page 50, which is the short table of contents in the residential That same subsection, 212202, from bed and breakfast to ADUs. Then, on page 51, there's a list of conditional uses. We may have already discussed this as well. Guest houses are listed as a conditional use. I believe we agreed to delete that. And the question was, should we add ADUs as a conditional use? In regards to that, DLCD's guidance on implementing ADUs and housing in general states that cities cannot attach any hindrances to housing development, and in my opinion, my opinion only, having an ADU subject to a conditional use permit would be a hindrance. So should we just not include it as a conditional use? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
The goal is you're trying to put development in housing and make it more accessible to people.
Correct.
I think that there are teachers, you have people that are in the area that can't find housing, so if I vote again, or at least give it a pathway for people to find housing, I would say I would not put it as a conditional use.
Okay. Okay.
I can see it as a single teacher who's not married needs a place to stay, and somebody has an ADU that they can rent out, helps them.
Well, they still could, even if it was a part of a conditional use, you still could rent it.
This eliminates one hurdle.
Yeah, it just makes it a hurdle, but I'm trying to think on why somebody would have it with a conditional use permit.
So, guest houses, remember, were conditionally permitted, and having a conditional use permit required allowed the planning commission and the city council to make sure that the guest house was following the parameters that were outlined in code, such as using the same septic system, not having cooking facilities, and that kind of thing, before they were approved, before plans were approved. But with ADUs...
Wouldn't we want them to still have their septic approved, though? That's the biggest issue.
That's what I'm... So, when we get further into the language, I agree, when we get further into the language about requirements for ADUs, we can make that part of a requirement, that it uses the same septic system or not, whatever you agree, and that any change to an existing septic system in order to accommodate an ADU would require possibly certification from DEQ, much the same as is required for short-term rental units that are, were houses and are now, were single-family houses and are now converted to short-term rentals. So we could use that similar kind of language for ADUs.
Okay. As long as it's going to be in there, same thing.
Okay. Okay, so then, going through still page by page, on the references to ADUs on page 52, the section 21130 specifically says, "Accessory dwelling units and all other units not listed under sections, et cetera, et cetera," are not allowed. So I'm assuming that we should agree to delete accessory dwelling units and from that. So the phrase reads, "All other uses not listed under sections, dah 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 dah," are not allowed.
Yeah. Lines try to add those two.
Okay, moving over to page 57. And I think again, we have already agreed to make the change from... So that section 21220 is accessory dwelling units instead of bed and breakfast? So this would be the section 21220, that has changed from bed and breakfast to accessory dwelling units, would be where we insert the language that we would like to see describing restrictions or requirements for accessory dwelling units.
So this is where you, we can put the sanitation requirement?
Correct.
I can see that the guidance that you got listed from the center bill.
On page 123 of this memo begins the language from the model code about accessory dwelling units that we can use as an example. Accessory dwellings where allowed are subject to review and approval through a type 1 procedure and shall conform to the following standards. So in our case, so a type 1 procedure is administrative, does not require planning commission input unless requested by staff. Is that what we want to say, or shall it simply be, are subject to review and approval through Dune City's building code, or some language kind of like that? Because it has to go through any kind of a review by admin or staff, is that considered a hindrance to development?
I have to submit plans when I built my house, right? I think that's reasonable.
So a person would, would it be a type 1, or would it simply be approval through the building codes, the building codes and permit process approval to? Because they would, the plans would need to be submitted for the site plan, it would need to meet the building, would need to meet all the setbacks if it's a separate building.
So I guess my question then to staff would be, does staff feel comfortable making that decision, or should it be a professional like the building inspector?
Hannah and Lila would probably answer that.
I mean, I just want to make sure, I wouldn't want somebody handing that to me, and then me being the one that decides, CA makes out a knowledge on that?
So if it's a new building plan, staff can't approve it, it has to be approved by the building department.
Okay.
In fact, don't remodels also have to be approved? I believe they do.
Yeah.
At least to a certain extent, so...
So that's where I would be comfortable going, to have a professional that makes that way. What is your thought?
So that would be just building code?
Just building code.
Just building code.
You said building department, so they have to come here, they have to submit their plans to Dune City, and Dune City sets up to building department?
So if they're building a new unit for the ADU, or they're doing a remodel, I believe they have to come to the city to get building permits, they have to submit their plans, like if you were building a new house. The building department is the entity that approves the plans.
But Dune City will receive them and send it to the building department?
Correct.
So we're shipping that part out, but then you still have to come here and submit their plan, a plot plan?
But what if it's not a new build? What if I'm converting my basement into an ADU?
You still have to pull permits because you're going to put water and electrical and so...
Yeah.
You're going to give them a plan of what it's going to be, right?
Yeah.
Layout.
So we need to be sure that whatever language we finally develop here clues the fact that permits have to be pulled and approved. Any inspections on even a remodel in a basement, I believe, are done by the building department to make sure that the electricity and the, well, they all need code. So ultimately, all final authorizations for that type of thing are from the building department. So
So then it's already building through building.
So the city, when plans come in typically, the city gets the plans, they review to make sure setbacks and that kind of thing are all up to code. And then the actual building plans go to the building department to sign off on the construction part of it. Once that's signed off, the city issues a permit. Once the construction is finished, it's inspected by the building department and signed off and the person, the applicant is given a certificate of occupancy. I believe that's the way it works in the nutshell. So the language that we want to put in here is maybe something we don't decide tonight, but can work on. Accessory dwellings are subject to review and approval through more building procedures. Are subject to state building, state building codes. The same standards as residential dwellings?
We can ask, we can ask why.
Okay.
I think we just put a note that we need to iron out the verbiage here.
Okay.
I'm fine with the accessory dwelling unit. I think it needs to have a plan and it's being inspected. It's gonna have water, it has septic.
do we want to be sure to call out separately in this section? Where is it? Septic expanded use approval. Using the same or similar language that we have in our short-term rental ordinance, which says, "If the property is served by a private onsite septic system, the property owner shall provide an approved onsite wastewater authorization notice from the Lane County Sanitarium." Perhaps massage that so that it indicates that if the ADU is using the same septic system, it has to have that authorization from DEQ?
And it's approved to be able to be put on that system.
Correct. So we'll want to add that, something.
I know when I planned my house, I got a bigger septic tank to plan for having a garage and a bathroom.
Uh-huh.
So I would figure thinking that eventually I was wanting, I was going to add so my tank is bigger than what, I could've gone anywhere with a thousand gallon tank, but I fit two hundred gallon tank in because I knew that eventually when I put a shop on there, I'm gonna have a bathroom, a shower, maybe separate laundry.
Okay. Is it worth calling out if the ADU will not be served by the existing septic system that it would need the same Lane County Sanitarium approval as a new build would? In other words, it's got its own septic?
Seems kind of obvious.
Is it obvious? Is it obvious?
I mean, I guess you need to spell it out. If you're putting in a new septic, you have to put in a new septic system. It has to go through all the groups.
That's true. Do we need to call it out?
I think that you just re spell it out, say this is a major condition. If you're gonna have this ADU that has plumbing, it needs to go.
Has to have plumbing. No outhouses allowed.
If it's gonna have plumbing, it needs to have the appropriate.
Okay, so the language will be something like, if the ADU is gonna be on its own septic system, it needs septic approval by Lane County Sanitarium, something like that.
It's not being tied to the main house.
Okay.
It's own transfer, whatever they do.
Okay.
And not in the septic business, I mean, that's professionals.
Okay. In the model code here, it talks about maximum of one accessory dwelling or maximum of two accessory dwelling units per lot. Do we want to specify a maximum? One, two?
A number on a lot?
Uh-huh.
So in the, in the model code, it says like, if you have one, you can have a maximum of one exterior. And then if you had two, you could have an interior.
Or your basement.
So like, yeah, like if I had a walkout, like my walkout basement, I can make that as a internal ADU as somebody lived down there and I could put an exterior one, like the garage.
So if you did that, then what would you say parking wise?
Yeah, that's another.
I mean, so I'm never for limiting what someone has on their lot, but other people may not want, you know, people's in the street, there would have to be a parking, there'd be a parking spot for them, I would think.
But then you're reading the, there's a memo on that, it says you put.
Is that considered a restriction?
That's a restriction.
So they just park on the.
Well, trust me, I know.
I know, my mind went, because like we were talking about earlier, a lot of our roads are very narrow. So not that I would wanna restrict it, but at what point do you say, I can't safely get these things down this road because Jamie has two ADUs and each of them have two adult driving, two cars? I mean, because if someone's got, you know, an acre.
Sure.
What's your thought, Gail?
I think it needs to be a consideration. And you can't really allow someone to build something that then can't be used because the park, because there's no park. So in our design standards section of code, 155.3, under vehicle parking and loading standards, we have a chart telling us how many parking spaces are required for various different uses.
What page are you on?
Page 105.
I mean, that was just, I don't wanna get, how about one, that one is a.
Well, it's a question.
No, it's.
There has to be parking and you can't park on the street in Dune City, so, yeah.
It's supposed to.
Oh, that's awful. So so is and are.
Not you, it's the, it's the, it's the other people that are parking along, clearly.
Single or multi-family, two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. It's over there, yes. So do we need to do we need to massage that language and then also add, under a description of ADU, a reference to this parking requirement section?
I think it's a good idea.
There's two. So looking at this table. If you have an ADU, it's already making a multi-family use, right? As long as we're being aware of the language.
It could be considered a multi-family use.
It could be. Our definition of a multi-family building was a building that houses more than one
Generation.
Dwelling unit, sharing common floors, walls, that kind of thing. So it says currently, single or multi-family dwelling. Could we say something like single or multi-family dwelling or single family with an ADU requires two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit? Does that make sense? Say that again.
You would say multi-family and ADUs?
It's basically if you're gonna have a housing unit and ADU, each one would require two parking spots. So if they're both on there, you'd have to have four parking spots.
So instead of.
Off-street parking.
Sorry. Right, so where it says, "Single or multi-family dwelling", we could add, "Or single family dwelling with ADU."
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the parking. Okay. Then back to, back to how many ADUs do we want to allow? Again, model code says there can be a maximum of one that's detached or or it can be attached. And then the other option is two units, one of them is detached or and then the, the second one can be part of a residential dwelling. So do we wanna put a maximum?
So here's, here's the mud, right? If you have the one attached and one detached, right? Then if we put pursuant to our parking situation, so let's hypothetically say we have a house, we have a basement that's being converted to an ADU and then they put another ADU on their property that's an exterior. So now you, in theory, you should have six parking spots.
That's correct.
Right? So.
Size. Size of the lot is gonna become important.
It is.
It always will be. The size of the lot, the ability to meet the setbacks, provide for appropriate septic. Somebody has the lot size.
It's always gonna be a constraint, naturally built in. If somebody has the lot size to have two ADUs with six parking and they meet setbacks and everything. Are you okay with that?
Fine.
Why would you thought, you think, too many? You think?
I just remember the people are gonna feel like they have an apartment next door. A whole.
But if your lot's big enough.
Your lot's.
They're not close to your neighbor anyways.
Yeah, that's true.
If you're meeting setbacks and septic for that many.
I guess all of these, other than the parking, the septic, all of that's gonna be a cost factor and affect what you're gonna be, what you're paying to do any.
Yeah, because this one says that it cannot exceed this many square feet or 75% of the primary dwelling's floor.
Yeah, that's gonna be part of the next discussion too. So again, Dune City is not large enough yet that it is forced by the state to allow ADUs.
Correct.
We have in the past, as we know, have heard that people would like to have them. We know that there already are lots of them in Dune City that are not legally permitted. So this, having this in code simply allows us to permit them through the normal permitting process, sort of track where they are, and which is give people the actual permission if you will, to have them. So the question is, do we want them to only have one? Or can they have, if they have the space and the requirements for setbacks and septic, could they have two?
I think that's a hard one. I, I agree with Jamie if they have the space and it's your, you're at my end and, you know. Our biggest, our biggest thing is parking on the street.
Okay. We're gonna get plenty of feedback from the citizens when this part all goes to public.
Which I would like anyway. I would like to hear other people's feelings on it. To see how the people that want one or currently live next to one, because I don't have.
Okay, so shall we use model code's example of language for two units?
I would use model code. Not like this, this is like, well, where'd you get this? This came from model code.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I could do the perfect example of having two if I wanted to, because that's the space, right? But in theory, I could pull this off and have enough parking I have. It's just a lot. So the subject is even bigger for that. You have basically three families, you have one, two, and three.
But like you said, if someone's connecting to your septic, you're still getting or having to have a new one, DEQ involved. And so I think. And so I think.
Okay. Okay, so next, in the model code language, and again, just to remind you what we're doing, we're outlining the guidelines or the parameters for accessory dwelling units, okay? So floor area is described in model code with limits on the size. A few years ago, we had an application for a guest house under the conditional use permit process. And at the time, we didn't have any limits on the sizes of guest houses. The proposed one was something like 1,200 square feet. Not huge, but kinda big.
That's pretty good size.
And during the city council's public hearing, of course, completely different mayor, completely different city council, but during the public hearing, there was some concern from the council and possibly some citizens about the size, that 1,200 square feet was pretty big for a guest house.
Absolutely.
Despite the fact that the lot was plenty large for it. And at the time, the council said to the planning commission, "While you're rewriting your code, make sure you include a size limit on guest houses." I don't know how this council feels about it, but it seems reasonable to assume that there should be a size limit on an ADU as well.
I agree. I think so.
I agree. We can ask one right now. Stayed out of it, can't use it for Texas.
Okay, so what do you think? We can pick a number. Model code has 800 to 900 square feet, or 75% of the primary dwellings floor area, whichever is smaller.
Oh, if you have an 1,800 square foot, single-story house, 75% of that is 1,350 square feet.
Wow!
What is the average size home of?
Yeah, so you say you choose a number, eight or nine, or, I don't even know if it needs to be 75% of the primary dwellings floor.
And that's a number we can fit? Yes, correct, so.
So if you had a 1,500 square foot house, right, and single-story, one is a single-story, and you put 75, just using model code, their number is, you know, 1,100 to 1,250. So if we decide, say, you know, under 1,000 square feet, or, and it says whichever one is smaller, right? One, which is
I guess I'm wondering for one, why does it, what's the 75%? Why that language even? That can just go.
That, well, that, that says it can't be
The max may not exceed. So whichever is smaller. So if you have, if you have a tiny home, you wanna put another auxiliary dwelling, it can't be bigger than
Your tiny home?
Your tiny home.
I guess my question would be why? I'd say if we're just, if we're choosing a number, we choose, yeah, I don't know, choose a number. Cuz that would be a bummer if someone does have like a tiny home or a small apartment. I think about some of the older houses. I have family in one that's not 900 square feet, Alphacholberry, so if they had to go 75%, they couldn't build something bigger than 600, 6-something?
675. That is more? So why don't we just say not to exceed that?
Might not just be my question, I think, you know, that's a three-quarter year lot. I don't know how many of those are in Dune City, that kind of scenario. Some older houses, I think are smaller.
I'd say just put your number is 1,000 square feet and call it good.
Shall I see 1,000 square feet?
We've got eight done.
Eight to 100.
Okay, 100,000 square feet, not exceed.
I'm fine with that.
Are you? Okay.
What, how do you feel?
I feel whatever you feel.
No, honestly, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, so for floor area, detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed 1,000 square feet of floor area.
Period.
Period.
Makes it simple.
We like simple.
Well, so then now look at number two. Let's say you're the basement of that 2,400 square foot house, and that basement is the complete, like, area of the house, but now you can't exceed 1,000, you cut some of it off?
That's my, that is my walkout basement. You know, if I, if I converted my crawl
That would be my only thing, is if it's an attached one.
Like, but if you go look at, if you come to my house and you go into my crawl space, right, it's tiered, and you couldn't perfectly make all that space livable, but I could make 1,000 square feet of it probably livable.
Okay.
I mean, because mine's a step-down foundation, I could make two of the three steps work as a living space, but there's still things that we have to do to make it workable.
And you might have stuff in the lower swivel that, you know, utility stuff that serve the whole house or whatever, and it would be
And mechanical.
Mechanical things, and that, and that would not be part of the square footage of the ADU.
Okay, so let's say your ADU is the second story because you're only using the lower floor living space, you don't do the stairs, and so the whole upstairs is that size. I don't know.
So when you have a, you have an auxiliary swelling unit, that's a second story, does it have its own entrance and exit?
I feel like my words is going down a rabbit hole.
It is a rabbit hole.
But I know, but I hate to I don't know, I don't know when that number went up. I'd like to hear, if you think that we'll have, like, community input, I'd like to hear.
Because I know somebody who has a second-story ADU that has a second entrance and exit, and a staircase to it.
So do I.
So you have to figure out
Yeah, so you'd be
We'd have to put that in code.
You'd have to define which one is ADU and which one is primary.
Yeah.
That's where the, that's where the water, the waters will get muddy.
Do you limit the square footage on attached? Or will it be detached?
If you're gonna put a limit, you put a limit. Otherwise, you get, well, this is this and that is that, and like, well, if you're gonna turn it into this, this is what the code says, if not, don't convert it. Cuz otherwise, it's just a house. Right? You can rent a room in your house. So you're making a separate living space with a separate
Actually, I don't know if you could. I know they do.
But if, but an ADU includes kitchen facilities, right? Yeah, I love that.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, it would be, it's a separate entity that you're
Yeah, so, so rented room is does it have all of the, all of the
I know, it needs to be shared.
Well, you can say 1,000 feet and then if
Well, the community is gonna kick it back.
Yeah.
You leave it up very public.
I don't wanna kicked back, kicking out again.
Poor choice of words. The community is going to give you feedback.
Okay, so
And I would like to hear feedback because I'd like to hear from people that it would impact positively or negatively.
Do you think we're done with it? I don't know.
Do we put a number on detached and attached?
I would just put 1,000 on both of them.
Okay.
And be done with it.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
We just can't possibly
We can't consider every I know, but I'd like our community to think that we really are trying to think of all scenarios, and so to make what's the best decision.
If you told me that I couldn't go more than 1,000 square feet in my crawl space, I could turn it to. They're like, okay, you have 1,000 square feet, well, what am I gonna do with the rest of that space? Well, I could put it as storage for me, that I have access to, it's still my house, it's not getting wasted. Right? Right now, let's say crawl space is not being utilized. So now I'm at least able to utilize it. Okay, so maybe. Nothing's perfect.
So do we wanna keep that second sentence? In number two from model code, where it says, "However, accessory dwellings that result from the conversion of a level or floor of the primary dwelling may occupy the entire level or floor, even if the floor area would be more than 1,000 square feet." Do we wanna keep that?
There you go, Jamie.
I think that sounds great.
I think that's fine. Okay.
There you go. Model code has got that figured out for us.
Okay. Okay, other development standards. "Assessory dwellings shall meet all other development standards." Here it specifies height, setback, lot coverage, et cetera.
We're striking number two. There is, there is an off-street.
Yes, so I think we need to keep number one, where it says, "Conversion of existing legal non-conforming structure is allowed provided that the conversion does not increase the non-conformity."
Okay.
Okay, and then, as Sean said, delete number two.
Yep.
Yeah. But that might be the place where we put the reference to our parking guidelines.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
D2. Dune City.
Parking guidelines apply.
Okay, now, other development standards. That might be where we also put the septic. And septic, I would do, yeah. Okay.
Put it where?
Put that inside before the et cetera. Yeah, okay, so no septic? Is there anything else under other development standards that we should add? Actually, you could put parking up there and not even need number two. Yeah, so I think, did we just say we're gonna delete this number two, C2, from model code?
Right.
And put our parking guidelines that we just talked about there? In one, in
I would, I would spell out parking as its own.
Yeah.
Cuz if you say, "C2 parking," it's, it's a line item reference.
Yeah.
If you have it included in one, people are not much really involved in. But if you say, "Hey, in C2, under a special, or other, other development standards, you can have your ADU, because our community doesn't have ample street parking, there is a requirement that specifies
Well, I'm sorry, just the, where it says EG, height, setbacks, lot coverage, septic, and parking guidelines. I'll delete one of that coverage.
Cuz the parking guidelines
We could, we could, I kinda, just because I think parking is important, I think call it out.
Call it out.
Instead, instead of the things that are on a site plan, you all believe me?
Okay.
I think because we're making a special consideration, okay, this is, I think septic, too, you'd be like
Yeah, so
I would, I would, I would put septic
Have a one, a two, a three.
Yes.
I would make septic a big
Put it on its own.
Yeah.
On its own, I think, hey, this is a specific with a note saying, "In septic, you have to have this very well defined."
Okay, now, anything else that you can think of? Okay, so if we go over to page 58, just for, for good discussion, since we have a little time here. Page 58 is where we used to have, or still do have, but won't have descriptions about the guest house. Is there any language from there that we need to incorporate over into the ADU section? So we talk about the floor area. What about this blurb, number D, about utilities? Do we need that, do you think? I don't think so, but Yeah, I'm addressing the septic system again.
Now, my mind was thinking, let's say, you know, you live on the lake and somebody has a well, and they know their well runs low in the summer, so do they have their ADU pumping it out of the lake? That would be the only thing that I would think to spell it out, but maybe again, that's
This, this says, "No separate meters from guest house shall be allowed." Do we wanna make that a requirement? That was one of my questions. Do we wanna make that a requirement, or can we even? I can see where some of them would want separate utilities. I can hear one way or another.
Does it matter one way or the other? What, why is it we wouldn't want that? I don't know. I'd be more thinking like, you know, if you've got two ADUs, I would like you all to have trash service and not garbage can pileup for dump day. I don't know.
I think if we start requiring things like separate addresses, separate utilities
It makes it difficult for people.
Then it may make it more difficult. It's making it more difficult for the city to try to monitor that. And do we really care? Does the city really care? All we care about is that if they have an ADU, that it meets all the height, setback, structural approvals, parking. Do we care about the rest of it? I don't know if we do. We know they have to have the water, the septic, the parking, the, all the setback and site plan.
I don't think a separate meter, I mean
Do we have the right to specify that? I don't know if we do. I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think we have the right to say that it has to be sanitary, or it needs to be parking, because those are issues that impact the neighbors and everybody else.
Yeah.
So, but meters, I mean, they're gonna have to figure out how they
Most ADUs are a lot rate, and it comes with utilities Wi-Fi. I don't see anybody wanting a separate.
And if a person wanted to go put a separate And if a person wanted to go put a separate meter on their ADU, that would be up to them. I don't, I don't see how, I don't see how the city could object or.
As a cost, they're going to have to pay, so.
Yep. Okay. So, and separate address, the city doesn't care, do they? I don't think they do.
No. At what, at what point do you, do franchise fees get charged? Are they per, per legal lot? Order of the lot? Or are they charged to an individual address?
Deal? I don't know.
That's a question you write down in this.
Oh, I didn't bring it.
I have the franchise agreement with me, but I.
For a separate address, trigger pay on another franchise fee. I don't know.
That's a great question.
Wait, wait, no, we don't want to ask.
I do know.
But that, because that's no longer an accessory dwelling.
Okay, but to answer Gayle's question, it's a percentage of the fees collected by the utility companies that we get. All right, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter how it comes in. Okay.
I'm not saying anything that jumps out that I think we need to.
Okay. So do we feel like that's kind of roughed out where the ADU language needs to be? Okay. So what we'll do is, since Lila's not here, I'll type up some notes for her to use for a few minutes and I'll try to put our discussion about this into some language we can take a look at next time to make sure we haven't forgotten anything or into P P whatever. And we, in any, in any case, we can review it again.
That's wonderful.
Okay. And one more thing.
Follow up on building now or in the fall?
Follow up on building. An outbuilding is your home. So, you know.
Yeah.
That came up.
I already have a review. Different feelings.
That was a comment that came up in public hearing, I think. And it's been raised a couple of times since then. So.
Do you remember the comment?
One of them wasn't very polite, so I don't want to repeat that one. It basically, it was, why can't I build a building, an outbuilding before I build my house?
Correct.
And I, there is a certain amount of logic to that. So, where in our code? I mean, it's the fear that it's an outfield, they might become a public building and we know some means to build. Primary residence built.
Correct.
Or something like.
Do we let people live in a trailer in their property until they're built?
Yes. In our new code, we allow people to live in a mobile home or a camp trailer until their house is built.
Yes. Yeah.
So I.
But the, but the, but it isn't how much it costs to build. Not everybody can afford to do things straight up.
That was my discussion with a former planning commissioner was, let's say you take the money and you buy the lot on the lake and as you're saving, you want an outbuilding to store your paddle boats or a kayak so you're not taking it back and forth every time you go and visit your property. That was my thought.
I'm fine with it. Not everybody has the funds able to go from zero to 100. So most people have to.
But I think the concern would be that you never got past having a storage unit and coming in with your RV.
We already have that already. We, we already have people that have lots that have that. Like you have, you know, they have a subject there.
What do you mean, you're like, that people would?
Oh, hold on.
Instead of building, they'd be in their RV.
Yeah, they would. Right. They would never build. So who's going to come in their RV? So on page 51 of our 268 is where the objectional, objectional language is. Paragraph B says accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit. And at some point, we decided to delete that altogether.
Okay.
I can see you got notes. It's not a dwelling. Telling property owners they can't use a property for storing equipment. Not a town full of storage sheds. Yeah, that was somebody's note. Yeah, I know, but. And so at some point, we did decide to delete that requirement. A requirement that, well, accessory buildings may not be cited prior to the issuance of a residential building permit. In other words, you have your lot, you want to build your barn on it before you build your house. You come in and you get a permit to build your barn. And that's fine with us.
I think you have, to get your permit to build your barn, you still have to put a site plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the barn, this is where the future house is going to be.
You may not have to indicate where the future house is going to be, but you still have to have a site plan.
With your site plan.
But you don't have to with storage shed.
If it's under 200 square feet.
Correct.
Yeah, under 200 square feet, I don't really, that doesn't. But that, to me, it's your lot. Like, why are we sweating 200 square feet?
But if it's bigger than that.
Then you have to do the permitting process.
Correct.
And you have to have a site plan and you have to say, this is where the septic is going to be and this is where your drain field is and this is where, you have to draw it out. I'm okay, you, you bought the money, it's your lot. You should be able to use it.
I mean, I know there's a lot down below Ross at the lake where they put in the septic. And then we get out of getting water. And they came in. So this was all before COVID. They came and they set up with a tent for the summer. And then they disappeared. Well, they buried, they buried mother on the front.
Oh. I can see where maybe, you know, living by our next door, I feel strongly, if it is your lot and you're camping on your lot on the lake, why do I care? Why do I care if you never build on your lot and you want your lot as recreational? I don't care. You bought the lot. If I cared so much, I should have bought the lot. I mean, granted, I'm not in that situation, so I can't speak from any kind of experience. But, but my thought would be, if you choose to never build, why do I care? If you want to just keep it as recreational so your family has lake access.
But is it different if a person purchases the lot and they decide to put some sort of a barn on it? Storage barn or whatever? And then they, and it's bigger than 200 square feet? Are there any requirements that the city should have for that?
Did they, did they put a permit for that or?
Do we need to say, instead of this code that we deleted, do we need to say something about accessory buildings may be citing prior to the issuance of a residential building permit provided that site plans, whatever else, are submitted and approved? Site plans and building plans. Do we need to say something about that?
But wouldn't if someone was building a barn, you'd have to do it anyways?
Yeah, I think we're, we're going, we're.
I, I think I'm missing what you're trying to say. I'm sorry.
So I'm, let me ask one. Chris, is your hat on?
Yeah.
Oh.
If you're taking input. I think, if I remember the discussion during that point, it was somebody who had a lot and they never planned to build a house.
Right.
And they just wanted to put a shop on the house or on the property, sorry. Put like a, a barn, a shop or something. And they were just going to be using it to store things or to work there. Like as a wood shop or something for personal use, not commercial. But they had never, they were never going to build a house. And you're saying that they can't use the property unless they plan to put a house on it.
I do vaguely recall that that was one of the scenarios. And then the other ones, there were a couple of other ones mentioned where I'm going to build a shop or storage for the tools while I'm building my house, but it may be years before I get around to building the house.
I think even if you don't ever build a house, I mean, somebody's wanted a wood shop, that's awesome.
I mean, we have, we have lots, both like lots and non-like lots that have never been built on, their own.
Yeah. So are we okay then with just completely deleting any reference to accessory buildings needing permits or plans?
A week? Two months to overturn it's a week, right?
Well, you'd have to have a plan if you were building a barn, a shop.
I think that's what we're getting stuck on, Ashley. I think what we're saying.
Right, you have to get a building permit.
Yeah, if you want to build your shop, right? If you have a.
I don't care which building, as long as you are.
If you have something, if you're building a structure on the lot that you paid for that's over 200 square feet, you have to go through the building process.
Yeah.
Right? You have to pay the city, you're going to say, this is what we're putting here. Great, cool. We, we just stamp it and say, thank you, take the fees.
Yeah.
Move on with life. Now, if you put a little shed, you know, 200 square feet, pop that thing down wherever you want because it's an easily removable thing for the next owner. They can bring a bulldozer and knock that thing down. Later. That's, this is, you're spending $100,000, you should be able to do what you want or however much money you're spending, right? So why are we putting barriers?
Was there a reason for it? Like, Repentful, what was someone's, do you recall from conversations over the years, why, why is somebody wanted a residence before a shop, a barn, a storage shed?
The comments that's here is, you don't want a town full of storage sheds.
Well, they want an HOA, which is, this is not what we want. Reason I moved to Dune City is so I could, so I could not have an HOA, so I can live the way that I want. So I'm sorry that that person's upset that somebody is enjoying freedom. I mean.
Or can go live in Florida.
They can, they can go live in an HOA.
I do feel strongly that if it is your lot and you are meeting, you know, building requirements, septic, do what, do what you want on your land.
Yeah. Like, I'll, I'll answer your question of having somebody who is camping on their lot before they build. I thought it was cool. I was like, oh, cool, I haven't heard of that did that.
So one of the comments that we talked about when we were viewing, were reviewing comments from the public hearings was this exact one. And the citizen wrote citing them is okay. Citing and building are two different things. And after we discussed that, the planning commission agreed to just delete that reference to accessory buildings and sightings altogether. And I believe then we just assumed that if they're going to build something over 200 square feet, that they know they have to get a permit and a site plan.
Yeah.
But what do you think, am I missing something? I don't know, like, if you're seeing something that I'm missing, share it.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Just, they need to get a site plan. If, if they're building a building.
If you're building.
Of more than 200 square feet, you have to get a permit. But that doesn't mean you have to get a site plan. I'm not, I'm not sure.
We'll say, let's say, you gotta get a building permit.
You have to get a building permit and depending on the structure that you are building, there are certain conditions you must comply with. As for the, by our code.
By the building code.
By the building code. Is it all reasonable?
Does it need to say? Mention something here to reference that to building code?
I don't know. I really don't know.
Yes. We're, we're talking about caps, like, is there a cap on the little 200 square? I mean, can you put like 10 of them on?
Your land.
Or under 200, 200 square feet? Yeah? Then it looks like a storage, like a storage, you know, business or something.
Maybe, but I don't know.
It's my land, I want to tend. I mean, I, that would just be my, I might not like it, but who am I to tell you what's right or wrong for your property?
That's a disturbing question.
I mean, you know, I might personally not like it, but it is your land. If I liked it so much, I should have bought it before you.
Uh huh, yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Build a fence if you don't like it. Great, I get to look at the fence on my property. Fantastic.
I know.
I mean, now you're going down the road.
You never know what people. No, you don't, but. I mean, maybe, you know, I could easily see I don't know, one for every fam, every, you know, your son John's family stuff is stored here. Your son Jim's family stuff is stored here. It's your property. But is that the wrong way to think about it? I don't know.
Harbinger in HOA.
Five people all have their own 200 square feet shed to put their stuff in.
Yeah. And they don't talk to each other otherwise. Oh, we're going down. Well, I don't want to, I don't do that.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything further about buildings. Are we done with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So again, I'll summarize the discussion. These are notes for review next time and I'll make notes for Lila to do the notes, if that's okay? With everybody?
Yes.
Next item of business is citizen input. Do we have anybody signed up? We have two people.
Yeah, I'll just take a couple. Comments. And I haven't let them stand up and all that, so.
Okay, so.
None of the rest of us are.
I think you're good.
Okay.
Did you sign in, Janine?
I did.
Okay.
And first, one thing is that there, that I think it would be very good if the planning commission could put their packets out online like the council is now doing. That didn't used to be the case for the council either. But it is, it is much, much easier that people are able to see what you're saying. Maybe they even come with the comments that you're thinking you might like to hear if they really knew what your options might be. So if that packet could go online prior to the meeting, that would be very good.
We've done a tangent here.
And.
It got loaded up way this week.
And then, speaking of what you were talking, just talking about, when I was growing up, I knew a family that lived off of Clear Lake Road, not too far from the boy scout camp. And they had more than, more than an acre, I think. But still, you just had a man, his wife and two daughters. And they lived in a very, very respectable garage for several years and finally built a two-story house with several bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes that's just what people need to do. And it is, it's, it is possible. I assume they went through. I assume they went through a permitting process, I don't know, but that would be the answer for me for that. And the last thing is, some, many places, especially in Westlake, as hard as people will try, will not have the setbacks and whatever because they were built prior. So I think the city would have to think about how they're going to. And people are actually trying to make, you know, trying to comply, do the best they can. How, what kind of considerations are you going to have for people who might want to say, combine two pieces of property together? One of them is the, the house, the other one's the, the mother-in-law house or something and doesn't have a setback like it's supposed to because it can't, because it was built in 1936. And that's the last thing I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janie Jackson, along with me. So I, I really enjoyed your conversation.
Could you speak up, please?
Yes, Janie Jackson.
It's Janie.
And I, I really enjoyed your conversation again. I am thrilled to hear that you are considering including in accessory dwellings. Lane County calls them mother-in-law houses, but I, you know, I had several verbal disagreements at meetings with the past city administrator, Jamie Mills, where she was vehemently against them and said, yeah, well, this isn't Lane County, this is Dune City and these are our rules. But I never understood, so thank you so much. I never understood why people couldn't have a small kitchen or a bathroom in the mother-in-law cabin. I mean, I love my mother-in-law, I, I love my mother, but it doesn't mean I want to drill under the same little hood. I'm sure a lot of you feel that way, or maybe a wrong child. You know, so it's nice if one person likes to get up at six in the morning, somebody else gets up at eight, that we're not sharing the same kitchen or bathroom facilities. And I do think, if they're on their own property, I love that you're saying that's okay, the family can be in an accessory dwelling building, but how do you know it's family, because it's been marked out? How would you determine that? So, you know, that kind of concerns me, but I love that you're considering this idea. That would be great for a lot of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is unscheduled lineups, not on the agenda. Any comments? Ms. Gordon?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nichols? Mr. Grunden?
I'm good.
Okay, I don't have anything either.
We motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It has been moved, seconded, and voted unanimously to a jury. It is 7:35.